And here we are now at Sandy Point, where in this area of Sandy Point, there's the construction of ten houses taking place. And I believe that the Honorable Shaun Richards, who is the representative here, would be happy that his own plan for Sandy Point is taking shape. We have a plan to build three hundred homes. The intention is to have as many persons as possible who are involved in construction working, working and providing for their families. And we are hopeful that at the end of this particular project, we'll then begin another project, building more homes in most of the areas. So far, we can boast that houses have been built in every parish and almost in every village. So everyone, everywhere can boast that they are feeling the benefits of this government. We have seen, walking with us today, that the housing construction is taking shape. And I'm confident that in 2019, when we ask the people of St. Kitts and Nevis again to look at what we have delivered and give us an opportunity, the people will say, "Well done, thou servant of the people", and give us an opportunity to serve again.
We have seen what can be achieved when we are at peace. We all know that it isn't by luck or by chance that our streets are becoming safer. It is because Team Unity is putting people before politics and working to deliver a better future for all of us. We cannot take our progress for granted. Working together with a unified approach, we can build a safer, brighter, and better future for all of our people.
I want to keep Team Unity for another five years.
I wish the best. Unity Government, they win the next federal election.
People are looking forward to another five years with Team Unity. You know, one good term deserves another. People are seeing the progress in the communities, even here in Central Bastille. Where I might not have been successful in the last election, although it was slim, they are seeing things happening. We're here by Sarpun Alley just off West Bon God, in front of a new business. This is new investment here in the ghetto. People have been seeing, have been feeling the benefits of this Team Unity administration and want to see more. And so the feedback has been tremendous. You know, these guys on the block, some have been able to access some of the opportunities that this government has made available for them. Others are eager to get on board and see how they can do the same. This time, it's about maintaining and empowering even more an administration that the people want in order to give them the kind of opportunities that we've seen over the last nine months.
This year, we open an exciting new chapter in the history of the Federation of St. Kitts and Nevis. By working together, 2020 can be the year we make our streets safer, build bigger and better homes, create even more jobs, and provide opportunities for our young people and for every other person. This will be the year we position St. Kitts and Nevis for a safer, stronger, and brighter future. Indeed, future generations will look back and say, "2020 is when St. Kitts and Nevis really stepped up." This was the year Team Unity consolidated again and built a safer, better, and brighter future.
This evening, the feature Personal Vandy Williams and his mom, who is Yvette Do, they are the recipients of the house designed and built for the specially-abled. Vandy is someone who had an accident several years ago and is somewhat incapacitated. He is confined to a wheelchair. And so this evening, the National Housing Corporation is proud, indeed delighted, that we can have this house allocated to him so that he now has his own home and at which he can be extremely comfortable. We are extremely proud of our accomplishments thus far. That is the NAC. We have distributed just over sixty houses over the last three to four weeks, and we have another approximately one hundred and forty to distribute over the next couple of weeks. It is indeed a privilege for the corporation staff to be engaged in this sort of activity. This is our mandate to provide housing for the people of this country. And it is extremely pleasing when we have ceremonies like these.
Today, we basically have here a youth forum organized by a group of young people in Sandy Point who wanted to have basically a sit-down with the Honourable Minister.
People feel that the youths have nothing to contribute, but we believe that the youths are very energized and have a lot of ideas to share.
The youths were able to discuss their concerns within the community and able to have that direct contact and dialogue with the minister, who would have responded to several questions in terms of
getting a job, explaining about getting a job, lands, also explain about how to get lands.
Education, about scholarship opportunities, persons speaking about the community coming together to do things within the community, the renaming of streets, the technology, the public library here in Sandy Point. A whole host of issues came out. I said thanks to all of the persons because I think it is important for young persons in particular. It would indicate to myself as the parliamentary representative, what are some of the needs of the constituents? What are some of their personal needs? And how the government might be able to assist them? At the end of the day, the Sandy Point community is about all of us living here in the Sandy Point community and developing the community to make it a better community for all of us.
We are continuing the series of walkthroughs through the various constituencies. And this evening, we were in the Stoneford area of Challengers, where we met the residents and the constituents and engaged them in terms of what the Team Unity Government has been doing. We've indicated to them that over the last five years, we have demonstrated to the citizens of St. Kitts and Nevis the type of government that this government is and that we have performed and that we will stand on our performance. And we've asked them for their support in the next five years as we move St. Kitts and Nevis further in the right direction. We have a lot more work to do. So we are banking on the people of St. Kitts and Nevis to give us that opportunity again to perform more than we did in these first five years. Because you will see, as we approach further into this period of electioneering, you're going to see a dynamic manifesto that will put St. Kitts not only to be number one. I don't know where else we're going to go, Prime Minister. We're number one already, but we're going to take it to heights never seen in this country. I can assure you of that. So I want to thank all the supporters who came out this afternoon to do the walkthrough. We had a magnificent walk. The response was excellent. And as you can see, it's nightfall, but we are still at it because our work is never done in the service of the people of St. Kitts and Nevis. I'm here at the Tyrell Williams Primary School. It's Monday, March 9, 2020. Basically, we run a breakfast program for about seventy-five children at the Tyrell Williams every day from Monday to Friday. This program is a volunteer program. All the persons who will see work in the background come every morning and volunteer their services. It's an all-enbacing program because we make sure we teach them things along the way. We teach them how to pray before they have to have their meal. We teach them afterwards. And we teach them etiquette in terms of how they should eat and behave with one another at the breakfast table. And I do this program because it was a constituent who had come to me and indicated to me that children come to school at mornings and they are hungry and they don't have anything to eat. So we started this program. And I'm really happy that I could have had the resources personally to be able to do this program. And so we've done this for the past several years and we will continue over the next several years because we believe this is a great community effort and really a great response by the parents of the constituents and the teachers alike.
I think of the Minister Grant, you know, unity. I don't know, listen.
Thanks for my honourable representative, Mr. Lindsay Grant. For his gesture, especially at Old Road Bay, where everybody wished that the sea water can go with me and me too. Thank him very much. I love you, Mr. Grant.
All I could say is Grant for sure is number four. My life, I am a PAM and I will never change. I will never change. Where was Grant, and I will return. I am a PAM from my backbone. It was a special day. It was a walk-through with the Honourable Lindsay Grant. And many persons have wondering, what have Lindsay Grant done to number four? I can talk all night about what Lindsay Grant have done to number four. You are speaking about the breakfast program. You are speaking about Old Road Bay rehabilitation. You are speaking about the fishery. You are speaking about some lovely horse. A matter of fact, you are speaking about the museum is going to come and stream. Is it Grant for sure in number four? I want
Through my window, through my window, I see my shade. Nobody cares what we're making through the day. It's like the only thing them believe I did. Nobody want to fight 'cause them no receive a checkpoint. It acts I know the fire I can't contain. Now give me no shock 'cause nobody give me no change. Now sell my soul just for no drastic change. I'm in a movie just like no plastic range. True tribulation, iron eye remain. And I hope you could do the same. One and in a disguise, the other on your chest. We never gonna rest till everybody blessed. Make sure and say, "Everybody blessed." Yeah, yeah, everybody blessed. Me say one and in a disguise, the other on your chest. And we never gonna rest till everybody blessed. We make sure and say, "Everybody blessed." Yeah, yeah, everybody blessed. Tell me whatever, whatever happened to the routine of the shit? Them say never come around and know you never lend a hand. The criticism flash like you don't understand, no. We lost, we lost away. Must be a business so the youths them just a pass away. Them blast the cans and not them say, they never listen when they pass a break. One and in a disguise, the other on your chest. We never gonna rest till everybody blessed. Make sure and say, "Everybody blessed." Yeah, yeah, everybody blessed. Me say one and in a disguise, the other on your chest. And we never gonna rest till everybody blessed. We make sure and say, "Everybody blessed." Yeah, yeah, everybody blessed. How could you rip a little girl? No pity down from your conscience. Like you never have no mother, burn your nonsense. Nah, support it and I'm open for responses. I would teach with this light used to
Good evening. We'll now invite Ms. Fraser, Gloria Fraser, to give the opening prayer. After Ms. Fraser has prayed, she'll be followed by Mrs. Walters, who will render the national anthem. Could everyone stand?
Good night, all. Let us all reverence God in prayer. Most holy, righteous, and eternal, loving heavenly Savior. Father, as we come before you this night, mighty God, as we celebrate with the government Team Unity of five years, mighty God, we thank you for strength. We thank you for help. Mighty God, we thank you, mighty God, for those who are under we come in. Father, we thank you, mighty God, for what was said here tonight. Father God, we come against the plan of the enemy tonight. Mighty God, in the name of Jesus, we reverse every plan tonight. We send it back to His sender. Mighty God, in the name of Jesus, as we lift them up before you. Mighty God, we thank you for the work that they are doing in this nation. Father God, for yourself, as you feed the poor, as you look after the poor, you will uplift them. And so mighty God, we thank you, mighty God, even into this upcoming election for another five years. Father, we thank you. We praise you. We glorify you and we magnify you. In Jesus' name we pray.
Prime Minister, the Honourable Timothy Harris, Dr. Timothy Harris, Deputy Prime Minister, the Honourable Shaun Richards, Senior Minister, the Honourable Vance Amory, the Honourable Eugene Hamilton, Minister of Agriculture Etal, the Honourable Vincent Byron Junior, Attorney General of St. Kitts and Nevis, the Honourable Wendy Fips, Junior Minister of Health, the Honourable Senator Akilah Byron-Niswet, Ambassador John L. Powell, and I think I have forgotten one minister. But I think that this is the Minister of the hour, the Honourable Lindsay Grant, Minister of Tourism and our representative in constituency number four. Constituency number four, make some noise for your minister and your Team Unity representatives. Supporters of the Team Unity Government, good evening. Welcome to another town hall meeting hosted by the Team Unity Government in celebration of its fifth year in government. It is great to be here this evening. We are different people, different colors, but we are here under one goal, one theme. Different colors, one people. That is unity. Over the last five years, the Team Unity Government has done much work for the people of St. Kitts and Nevis. As a result of this government, we have experienced the removal of VAT from food, medicine, educational supplies, funeral expenses. Our economy is stronger than before. This is evident by the ability to pay not one, not two, not three, but four double salaries consecutively. We have seen the restoration of the increments to civil servants. Our government continues to deliver for the people of St. Kitts and Nevis through social programs such as the Poverty alleviation program, where every household making under $3,000 receive $500. We have seen a record number of new business owners here in St. Kitts and Nevis. Because of our Team Unity Government, we have safer streets. No longer do we have to fear about crime and violence and walking in the middle of the road or in the middle of the night or having our doors unlocked. Of course, we still lock them, but we are safer or we have a feeling of safety now than ever before. We have our own Minister of Tourism here, the Honourable Lindsay Grant, who has shown that he is the most productive Minister of Tourism. In less than five years, Mr. Grant has brought over a million cruise passengers to our shores. Not once, but twice. In constituency number four, Mr. Grant also has a strong team behind him. He has the likes of Chelsea Williams, of Alithia Borel, of Merle Leibardt, of Slybon Camper, of Gloria Fraser, of Mandy Marsham and the like. Mr. Grant is secure here in number four. In fact, while on the Campbell Trail, you would hear persons in Old Road, in Challengers, in Middle Island, in Halfertree, in Lambor saying, "Grant for sure in number four." In fact, it was just in Challengers where we met an individual who said to us, well, he is traditionally a Labour supporter. He has voted Labour for a number of years, but this time, he is voting unity. Even on the streets of Old Road, I met a young lady. She said she voted for Labour and voted for Labour for years. And she said, if she were to say that the Team Unity Administration has not done anything over the last five years, she would be lying. And she has also said, if the people of St. Kitts and Nevis do not re-elect the Team Unity Government, then the St. Kitts and Nevis, the people of St. Kitts and Nevis would be ungrateful. And that is why we are sure that the people of St. Kitts and Nevis will re-elect the Team Unity Government. And we are even more sure that the people of constituency number four will make the right decision. Because one thing about the people of number four is that we have never, ever chosen an individual who has not had a seat in government. No matter where constituency number four votes, we always ensure we have a representative in government. And with this time, we'll be no different with Mr. Grant. Of course, Mr. Grant continues to challenge, to champion the cause within his constituency. Day after day, Mr. Grant provides breakfast to the young people of the Tyrell Williams Primary School. Mr. Grant has ensured that the people of Challengers, through his many lobbying with the Prime Minister, he has promised that the people of Challengers will receive their housing project on the way before the election. Mr. Grant has also ensured that the people of Old Road, especially as we deal with the Old Road Bay, we know that the Old Road Bay has been an ice war for years. I remember as a child having to travel to town for school. And one day, well, one year, we had a hurricane. I think it was Hurricane George R. Lenny. And the Old Road Bay was completely destroyed. The old road was completely destroyed, the road at Old Road Bay. And I had to travel across the island to Sandy Point, to Phillipses, to Keys, just to reach Bastille for school. And because of the proactiveness of Mr. Grant, no longer any individual will have to go through that again because of our Minister, Minister Grant. In fact, Mr. Grant, although small, is a giant. He has faced many criticisms over and over again. In fact, I often look at him and say, well, he's short, but he back broad. Because Mr. Grant is faced with criticism but like the individual that he is. the kind-hearted individual that he is, he continues to smile. He continues to push for the people of constituency number four because his heart is with the people of constituency number four. In fact, there are times when I call Mr. Grant and say, "Mr. Grant, look at what is happening." And he will say, "Not to worry, everything is under control. He has what is the best interest of his people in constituency number four." And so, ladies and gentlemen, people of constituency four and people, supporters of Team Unity, help me welcome Mr. Grant, our representative for constituency number four, to address us here this evening. I told you, he's a sharp man. I'm adjusting the mic. Good evening. Good evening. Well, Azad laid out some things here this evening. And I was wondering whether or not he want me to speak because he spoke on most of the things I wanted to speak about. We are here this evening and I want to first recognize the head table. I want to recognize the Prime Minister, Dr. Timothy Harris. I want to recognize the Deputy Prime Minister, the Honorable Shaun K. Richards. And I would like to recognize the Attorney General of St. Kitts and Nevis, the Honorable Vincent Jussie Byron. And on his right, let me recognize the Honorable Wendy Fipps, Minister of State in the Ministry of Health Etal. And to recognize the Honorable Akilah Byron Nisbit. And on her left, to recognize the Ambassador, the Honorable Jonel Powell. And to then recognize the Honorable Eugene Hamilton. And last, but by no means the least, the veteran of politics in St. Kitts and Nevis, our Senior Minister, the Honorable Vance Amory. I love this crowd tonight because this crowd tonight tells me that the Prime Minister, Timothy Harris, can ring the bell anytime. And I want to tell you, it's only one bell could ring and it's a bell rung by the Prime Minister. Any other bell is a fool, fool bell. So all you have to do is wait for that bell as we ramp through St. Kitts and Nevis and bring back a victory for the Team Unity. We are here tonight and this is part of our town hall meetings to celebrate five years of being in government. Five years of being in government. And we promised you in the run-up to the last election of 2015 that we were going to fix this country for the people of St. Kitts and Nevis and fixed we did. We told you, we were going to take this country forward, not backward. And if you look over the last five years, all you can say is Team Unity took this government in the right direction. We faced a lot of problems in the past. I don't have to tell you the problems we faced in the past because you know those problems. We came in with a very high IMF debt, $117 million. And you know what Timothy Harris said as the Prime Minister of this country? US dollars. $117 million. And we worked and we worked and we worked and we worked and then the Prime Minister said, "We paying off that, $117 million." And the reason why we paid off that is because we did not want to be beholden to the IMF. Because when we make our decisions, our decisions must be our own decisions, not because the IMF telling us anything. But you know, in 2015, 33 murders. 2014, 30 something murders. 2012. And we at 2020 now. And within the last year of this government, do you feel safer? Do you feel we have the crime under control? And who do that? Team Unity, Team Unity. And if we go back to the same old Labour and the same old Kiakipans, it means that we can't be safe in our homes anymore. It is this government, progressive as we are, brought the safety and security on our streets. And while I'm on that, you know, I hear them out there, the Neseers say all kind of thing about we paying people and we paying people. But Prime Minister, if you're paying them, pay them again. And the Prime Minister, as he sits here, walked away from the Denzel Douglas Labour Government for several reasons. But one of the reasons why he walked away from them is when they went and took up 1,200 or so acres of your land. Your land, which you want to build your house on and you can't get to build it on because they took it away. And you know what we did? Within the last two years, because we are so fiscally prudent and because we have the money in the kitty, we have bought back 400 acres in the name of the people of St. Kitts and Nevis. But you can't go back to that. That ain't what you want. What you want is what you have now. A progressive government. A government who understand the people of this country and a government that is moving the country upward and forward in the right direction. I want to thank the people of constituency number four. And I'm going to tell you, I want to thank them because they're saying all kind of thing about me. But one thing, the people of constituency four must understand, I have been there 20 years to thick and thin. And nothing like them could touch me. I banged them already and I gonna bang them again. But I want to tell you what I have been doing for the last five years. It is important that you know. For the last five years, I have been working hard. I have not only been working hard in tourism and in trade, but I've been working hard in this constituency. And you see, I believe in facts and figures. I believe in numbers. I believe in being judged on my performance. And so you know the performance in tourism? It's there for everybody to see. But I want to talk the figures tonight because figures don't lie. As much as they want to talk, all I can tell them, check the record, check the stats, check the figures, they're there for you. Because you see, in 2014, the last numbers that we had in the tourism industry, when that bygone Labour Party and Labour Government left the office, what was the number of passengers cruised into this country? The number was 639,762 passengers. 639,762 passengers with 297 cars. Well, what was it in 2019? In 2019, it was 1,046,019 passengers. So in 2019, within four years, we doubled, we doubled what they did in 2014. Tell me if that's not performance by your government. Already for this year, already for this year, as of February 29th, 2020, we had 512,640 passengers. But I want to caution you. I want to caution you. This year is an especially troubling year. This year is an especially troubling year. I don't have to tell you because we hear it every day, coronavirus. And we're having some impact on our numbers. But what I tell you, despite that, we are forging ahead, we are pushing ahead and we are making sure that we get the numbers that we want. However, the safety and the security of our citizens is paramount. It comes first. So if we have to turn away a ship because we are thinking about you and your health and wellness, so be it. So I just want to caution you, we are not going to reach the numbers. I'm telling you plain out, we are not going to reach the numbers. But you will appreciate and understand that we have the concern of your safety. And we have the concern of your safety because just today, just today, you would have heard that Jamaica recorded their first victim. And so, little St. Kitts, we can't take that pressure because I understand from advice from the Ministry of Health, if the coronavirus have to hit in St. Kitts because of our closeness of our people, the proximity of our people, it is going to be more catastrophic than the larger countries. So we are making sure that our borders are protected. I talk in records, you know. Because what I didn't tell you is that since I have been in office as the Minister of Tourism, is every year breaking record, you know. Every single year, I break the cruise record, every single year. You see, I don't like to pick up my chest. But when they start to press me, me press them too. And that is why, when they start to come out, me gonna come out like a Taliban. You understand? Because as far as I am concerned, I have the people of constituency number four and the people of St. Kitts and Nevis to protect. We can't let them come in here. And so air rivals have broken, you have not heard it much, but have broken air arrivals year after year after year after year, a breaking of arrivals records too. And so the last record that I broke for air rivals was in 2019, 163,657 passengers by year. Never done, never done in this country before. That's the record. I want to talk about the construction of the second cruise pier because that is significant. Because for 20 years, them people who were there before, for 20 years, they tried to do it, but they couldn't do it. It took Timothy Harris and the Team Unity Government to do that, bring us up. And the beauty about this new pier is that it is all local money. We ain't went nowhere foreign, as they say, took a borrow no money. It is all local money. Social Security, National Bank, TDC, who else? That sound like it, all local money. And it shows the commitment of the private sector in St. Kitts around this tourism industry. It shows you that they believe that the Team Unity Government can do what we say we can do. Because obviously, we got the people coming in to be able to pay for it. That is your government. I don't even have to tell you that we break records again, 2018, over a million. 2019, next million. They never do it before and hear them now. Oh, if we were there, we would do it. If you were there, would you do it? You had 20 years to do it and you couldn't do it. And that is why I'm saying to you, nobody with them, no study them. They had 20 years. What you need to do first of all is give Team Unity 20 years and then we start to talk to them. But apart from that, we have the third highest spend out of 35 countries in the cruise industry, third highest spend. Every passenger you see come off a ship, spend about $135.94. Not my figures. Not my figures, these are the international figures that can dispute this. Third highest, they have never ever been there. The highest number of groups in terms of what the group business, installers in the country, 2019. Sunlink at 29 groups. The Marriott at 23 groups. Four Seasons at 30 groups. That is the kind of business we're doing. And let's pause for a moment. Let's pause for a moment. What does that mean? Because figures really ain't mean on paper. But let us look at the practical reality of these numbers. The practical reality is that the hair braiders get in work. The Alarub vendors, oh, thank you, thank you, Shauna. Shauna in the house, Alarub vendors get in work. Okay? The primate vendors, what we calling monkey people them, get in work. The taxi drivers, the tour operators, all of them getting significant work. But look at today. Today, if you went into Bastille today, you think it's Christmas? Four ships at Port Zante today. Four ships at Port Zante today. And they say we had dinghy, so they say. But today in Port Zante, we had the world's largest ship, the Symphony of the Seas docked. I want to move on. The development of this strip, we have put millions of dollars in this strip. We have finished phase one of this strip. We are on to phase two of this strip. And if you go down on this strip, you will see the transformation of this strip. If you go to Black Rocks, when last you went to Black Rocks? Man, you need to go to Black Rocks. That's in the Prime Minister's constituency. Prime Minister, am I correct? That's in his constituency. We big him up, Black Rocks looking nice. When you go to Black Rocks, you ain't want to leave now. You don't want to leave Black Rocks right now when you go. That is what we're doing. And you know why we are doing it? We are doing it because tourism is not just about Bastille. Tourism is about Old Road. Tourism is about Challengers. Tourism about Phillipses, about Tabernacle, about St. Paul's, DAB. Tourism is all of us and all of us. And so we spreading the joys and the wealth of tourism all around. That is what we're doing. I don't even want to talk about the records in the music festival. I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to talk about that because that's my ministerial thing. I want to talk about what is happening in constituency number four. And I glad to see Lisa here tonight. I glad to see Lisa here tonight. Lisa, stand up and take a bow, please. And why I'm glad? And why I'm glad is because one of the programs in the area that we run is what we call a higher program. We gotta beef it up Leisha, we gotta do some beefing up it. But the higher program is an after-school program. So those in school who are slow or who want extra work to be done, we have a group of volunteers. Leisha never asked me for a cent yet. Because Leisha is a dedicated, she says she gonna ask me, I must say, I put my foot in my mouth. And Leisha is a dedicated teacher. So you have teachers like Leisha, you have like Joya Saunders, you have like Ms. Sutton, you have other, um, Mr., Mr. Woodley. All who have volunteers in this program, why? Because they love the children, they want to see the children learn, they want to see the children expand their mind, so all volunteers in this program. I wanted to give Leisha and the team behind her a round of applause. And I run a program, my breakfast program. And before I talk about the breakfast program, I want to tell you, it was my idea. Was not my idea, was an idea coming from a constituent. And that is why you have to give us the ideas because some of the ideas that you give us are the best ideas that we have. And so I took up this idea from a constituent when she said to me that children are going to school and not having any breakfast. And they said they're not being able to learn and understand and that kind of thing. And she said, why don't you run a breakfast program? So me take it upon me fast himself, because I know if I was bad. Take it upon me fast himself, took a run this breakfast program. And it started out with twenty-five children. So I used to get about, my wife used to dig me up like four o'clock in the morning, took a start to make this breakfast, I wonder where she be? And we start to make this breakfast every morning, twenty-five children. It was, trust me, hard, hard bad. But I did it and we carried the breakfast to the Tyrrell Williams Primary School Monday. We used to do it, actually, we used to do it twice a week, I think it was, we started Monday and Wednesday. And then the teachers and the students said, no, we want it every day. Boy, I said, every day? I had to get up every day now, anyhow, I enjoyed. But after it moved from twenty-five children to seventy-five children, I said, me can't do that. Me can't make breakfast every morning for seventy-five children. So I bought two commercial stores, I put them in the Tyrrell Williams School. And we employed someone to make the breakfast along with the volunteers. And we have a lot of volunteers, you know, we have a lot of volunteers. I mean, I don't have to hear, I volunteers are talking like Dottie, I wonder if she hear? Meadow, Merle, Latoya, Lona, I mean endless volunteers I have. Why again? I mean, sometimes I just sleep late now and they're over there volunteering the service, preparing the breakfast. I want you to give them a round of applause. And it is not only the breakfast, the children them don't just come and eat the breakfast. They come and before they have the breakfast, they guys say their prayers. No, the guys say their prayers. And I want to big up Latoya because I was there this morning. And three children went like what they want to eat before, they said their prayers, no, 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 praise false. So they said their prayers. And not only that, we teach them etiquette. Etiquette, very important. How you eat at the table and how you, what comportment you have at the table. So it's a very all-embracing program. As a matter of fact, if I do nothing else, I want to do this breakfast program because it is the best program, the most rewarding program, the most heart-filling program, that breakfast program. But I want to talk about Old Road Bay. We take things for granted, you know? Old Road Bay is going to satisfy for the people of this constituency and beyond. A problem that was there for the last forty years. Forty years, I driving across Old Road Bay, I afraid to go cross there, especially when it raining. But now because of this Team Unity Government, that will no longer be a problem. And so we have put thirty-one million dollars into Old Road Bay Rehabilitation Program to make sure the traveling public coming from the West are safe. That is what this government is doing. And I want to tell you, Mister Prime Minister, you know the problem with this Unity Government? We perform too much. We perform too much. So everybody think everything could come like tomorrow because we perform so well. Because that Old Road Bay was not in the manifesto. We don't do everything in the manifesto, we say we ain't got nothing to do, then we go to Old Road Bay. That's performance in five years by this government. Virtues playing field. Virtues playing field. I can blame the Honorable Deputy Prime Minister on this one. Because I told the Honorable Deputy Prime Minister that I wanted me lights, me Jumbotron lights on Virtues for the Virtues High School's poster which is Sunday. And he like a week, a week off. You think we could change the date, Prime Minister, Deputy Prime Minister? Because I want to thank him however, because very shortly, Virtues playing field, we be lighted by the Jumbotrons like they having the Barstair and all over, we getting that. And so that is performance by this government. And that again was not in the manifesto. I tell you, we outperform ourselves. Outperform ourselves, but guess what? That is what we are here for. We are here to make sure we work every moment of the day for the people of St. Kitts and Nevis, that is what you put us here for and that is what we continue to do. I mean, when you talk about roads, we have built roads in Virtues. And I want to tell you, for the Harry Fifth because I ain't even finished Virtues, go to here Leisha, but what about Halfway Tree? So I want to tell you Leisha, I want to tell you Leisha, that the tenders are in for the roads in Halfway Tree. The tenders are supposed to come back on March the twenty-third. And as soon as the tenders come back on March the twenty-third, not only Halfway Tree, but Godwin Gut will get new roads. That is performance, that is performance. The fisheries complex, twice the fisheries complex failed. In that, we did the fisheries complex in Old Road and the hurricane came and it destroyed it. Millions of dollars down the road. But this government was not perturbed. This government continued to say, we must give Old Road, which is the first fishing town in this country, the right to have their fisheries complex, so we went at it again. We got the engineers out of Jamaica to re-study the situation of the Old Road Fisheries and they came up with a formula. And I'm happy to tell you that the Old Road Fisheries Program is well on its way to completion. Big up the government again. In Halfway Tree, I resurfaced the basketball court in Halfway Tree. Because the young men said that they couldn't play basketball, they had nothing to do. So I resurfaced the basketball court in Halfway Tree and we put down brand-new backboards like they in the NBA, so big up the government again. Right now, in Canyons, we are putting down houses in Canyons as I speak. Because you know, housing has been a big thrust of this government. All over the country you see houses going down, big up Eugene Hamilton for the housing projects all across the country. And so Canyons are getting the houses. But you know, some people are saying, some people are saying, well, we ain't seen no houses building in number four. That has been the talk. I on the ground, so I know the talk. But you know, I like facts and figures. Because that's the only way you can prove what's going on. And the problem in this constituency is that we only have few areas where you could put down houses in clusters. Other than that, we have to build one house here, one house there, one house there, one house there. That is what we have to do. And I'm saying to you, when we were in the cabinet and we came to an understanding how this housing project was going to go and my cabinet colleagues could tell me if I'm wrong, but I was given forty-five houses to be built in constituency number four. And I could tell you, we are well on the way with the forty-seven. In fact, in fact, I'm going over my forty-five houses. Hear what I'm saying, I'm going over my forty-five houses because they're being built. Because when you talk to Clemente Duport down in Green Tree, Landel Brown, Stephanie Isaac, Russell Lewis, Viola Chapman, Valerie, Valerie Huber, Hewlett, Watcher, his son, all them they get house. But you might be walking around the place and you say you ain't seen them, but they're being built, they're being built. But I want to come through an important point for Challengers tonight. Because I know Challengers have been on my back, have been on my back, have been on my back about the housing project for Challengers. I want to admit to you, in Challengers, in Challengers, we've had a challenge. We've had a serious challenge in Challengers and this is a challenge. We started out maybe three years ago, determined that we were going to build some houses in Challengers. And we determined that we were going to build the Challengers houses in the area behind here by where Big Blue has his garage. As a matter of fact, you would recall that we graded off the land because it was our intention to build twelve houses there in a new development in Challengers. When the matter came before the Housing Authority, they, along with Planning Department, determined that it would be difficult to build the houses there. And the reason why it's going to be difficult to build the houses there is that the houses were going to be expensive and the drainage was going to be a problem. So they say, you have to find another route. So we search and we search and we search and we found an area over by the Gomzes, for those who know Challengers, back of the Gomzes, and we decided we're going to build here. The problem with the houses to be built over by the Gomzes, we didn't have any access. And access has been a problem. As a matter of fact, Eugene, over the last two weeks, we have been to the Gomzes, am I correct? To see if they could give us a temporary access over their land. Temporary, three months over your land so we can build the houses for the people of Challengers. They declined that access. Well, it's their land, so we have to appreciate and understand that. And so we can't get the access over the land to build the land. But I came down on the ground on Saturday because I said Challengers people must get the land. By hook or by crook, Challengers people must got the land. And so I came down here on Saturday and I drive up and down in Challengers, in the back of Challengers on Saturday. And I found an access. I found an access that can give us some respite and enable us to build the houses in Challengers. And I spoke to the Prime Minister. But you know, the Prime Minister don't like timelines eh? So I said, Prime Minister, we could start these houses now, he said, sure, you could start the houses just about now, but when you gonna finish them? I said, Prime Minister, mean on a contractor? Right? But just to say for the people of Challengers, I want to thank you for your patience. I want to thank you for pressing me hard. But I want to tell you, hope is here and we are just about ready to start the houses for Challengers. And I ain't gonna tell you when I am going to start them. Because one thing I realize in politics, if you tell a constituent you're gonna start something on Monday, choose the damn top of you, how come you say you're gonna start this thing Monday, you ain't start? So I think over the last twenty years, I've learnt my lesson well. How much time gone? Okay. I'm gonna do two more things because I'm running out of time. I'm gonna do two more things. One, I want to tell you because you've been hearing a lot on the radio. You've been hearing a lot on social media. You be hearing all manner of things. And real and truly, I didn't want to come to talk about my personal matters because I think the politics is bigger than my personal matters. But when people abandon or bang me name up and down the place, me gotta come to defense of my good name. Right? And so when people start to talk, me have to talk too. I want to tell you tonight, and listen me carefully. Listen me very carefully because after tonight, me not really gonna say much. But I want you to listen carefully. A man gave my law firm some money. I ain't even gonna say it's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars because it can complicate matters, that's what they're saying out there. But really, it's more than that, but let's, let's stick with the four sixty. He gave us four hundred and sixty thousand dollars, my law firm. He wanted three things. Three things he wanted with the four hundred and sixty thousand US dollars that he gave to us, three things he wanted. He wanted citizenship. He wanted a passport and he wanted a condo. Fine, not a problem. So what did we do? We did like any lawyer, you start to process the man things. You start to process it to satisfy him for what he want. So what did he get and what does he have today? And what did he have before them lawyers who play in politics trying to drag the name of my firm through the mud? What did he have? You hear the three things that say he wanted, right? Well, he get his citizenship. He get his passport. And he got a condo. So what the hell else they want me do? What the hell else they want me to do? You get what you asked me for, I give you what you want, well, what you got, what, what's the problem? But you see, it's a lot of politics. Right? And they gonna tell you something. Me man, you born here. Me man, you born here. And no Saint Lucian, no Trinidadian, gonna run me out of Saint Gip because me not gonna have a way to go. Right? So who all come from Saint Lucia and who all come from Trinidad and feel they can mash up my name in my goods, littles and kits, tell them, no take me on? Because when they start, there ain't nobody envy. And who live in glass house, no stone or stone. I have been very circumspect with this matter, very circumspect. You understand? So let them don't start the Tory. All I'm telling my supporters in constituency number four, all I'm telling the people of the country. all I'm telling the people of the country of Saint Kitts and Nevis, me not thief nobody bully, me not got nobody money. Because I will tell you, I will tell you something. I am the only man, I am the only man in the history of politics in this country put down my assets, me wife's assets, me children's assets on the table for everybody to school tonight. Me the only man up to now in this country do that. Only man. And if they want me to put down me assets and me liabilities again for me, me wife, me children, I could put down that because my hands are clean. And I want to tell you something. The final thing on that matter is that they're banding about, they're banding about four hundred and sixty thousand US dollars like that of money. My customers see money. My customers see money. So then me, who face me? So I want to tell you, I want to tell you, my only goal right now is to fight for the people of constituency number four and bring home this thing. But you see, while some of them are talking about me, me not got M.I.C.T. money for the last thirty years. Me not got M.I.C.T. money. And when, and when they talk about me, me not on social security nearly a million dollars. And, and when, and when they talk about me, me going to light up my house, me coming out for the last three years. Tell them, tell them, don't come and Lindsay Grant because me not got to take no photo shot to look like I twenty years. This is not time. This is not time for complacency. This is the time to hold up the hand of your candidates and make sure Team Unity bring home the victory. So what does this constituency have in a nutshell for the next five years? When I am elected by the good people of constituency number four again? I am going to give you, I am going to give you a new fire station and a new police station for constituency number four. I am going to give you the roads in Stoneford Heights, the road in Green Acres, the road in Canyons. That is what you're gonna get in the next five years. I want to tell you that this Team Unity government is going to give you bigger and better homes, safer streets, that is what we're going to do. I want to tell you that I'm going to give you a state-of-the-art music studio right here in constituency number four. I want to tell the people of Harfretree that they're going to get a brand-new community centre for Harfretree. And I want to end by saying, I want to end by saying, telling you, labour ain't change. Labour ain't change. The same old leader, the same old labour, the same old care keep hands, they can't change. They want to bring you back the same old policies that sent us to the IMF. So I want you, when you see them, it's simple to tell them, unity all the way, unity all the way. Unity in sect, unity in fight, unity in four, unity in three, unity one, unity one. Good night, unity all the way.
Wow, what a powerful speaker. The only thing I have to say is grant for sure in number four. So when it comes to tourism, not labour again. When it comes to constituency number four, not labour again. When it comes to the issue of crime, not labour again. And when it comes to tourism, not labour again. Grant for sure in number four. I tell you, he's small, he's small, but he back broad. And now I introduce our, our next speaker, the honourable Dr Timothy Harris. The leader of Team Unity. The one who holds the all in the bingo. And the one who has managed our economy well.
Thank you very much. Let's give our young and upcoming leader, Mr Hazard Gumps, a special round of applause. Team Unity has talent. And we have talent to spare. The future belongs to the young. And they must start taking leadership position today. And that is what Team Unity is about. Preparing a garden of Eden in which all our citizens and residents can flourish. I want again to say that Team Unity is the only party that has an agenda for the young people of Saint Kitts and Nevis. When you compare the new brand leadership that is emerging across the government in the parliament, we just appointed a new deputy speaker, young lady Travelling Stapleton. Put your hands together. Deputy Clark. Well, she may become the speaker after Aquila becomes the new representative for West Pass there. You look through the Ministry of Youth, we have given a young man an opportunity to serve. In almost every area of the government, we are giving young people a chance to actualise. We appointed perhaps the youngest Commissioner of Police in Ian Quealy. And we, in every area, intend to find young talent to help bring the energy and the drive and the dream of Saint Kitts and Nevis into reality. You look at us then, planning for the future. And you look at those in opposition going back to the past. Imagine, there is no succession plan in that party out there. One man after twenty years continues to hold on to the party, choking it to death. That is what they have. And everyone that comes is a say-off to me candidate. They have no ideas of their own. The stupidity which their leader speaks, they speak the same stupidity still. So they like tree blind mice, you see her, went for the run. That is what we have. And so I want to thank the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis for determining that for a safer and stronger future, we must return the Team Unity administration. You will do it because we have worked hard and we have worked responsibly and productively for the people of Saint Kitts and Nevis. In every area, we have delivered for you. In every area, we have been true. We promise you the five hundred dollars will come. We have brought it to the benefit of four thousand-plus families in Nevis and Saint Kitts. And it is making a difference. As we did the walk-through in Challengers, as we did it in West Pass there, as we did it in Saint Peters of Monkey Hill, and as we did it everywhere, one certain thing, the citizens and residents would say, "Thank God, Dr Harris, for what you have done for us." We have made a difference in the lives of the people. Twenty years, nothing like that happened. It hasn't happened in Dominica. It hasn't happened in Antigua. Only in Saint Kitts with the Team Unity administration, we have been able to do that because we are the best managed country in the Caribbean at this particular moment in time. When the sugar workers, former sugar workers, were denied an opportunity to get some severance after many years of toiling and labouring in the fields, it was the Team Unity administration that promised it and we delivered it to the people. Nine hundred and sixty-five persons benefited when in two thousand and five, the man that bad since the small closed the sugar industry over his dead body and he's still alive. We corrected that and under our watch, two thousand four hundred plus former sugar workers and their families have benefited from the payout. By any measure, Team Unity is better. And we have to ensure, have to ensure when faced with a choice, we make no mistake, no mistake that we choose a Team Unity candidate. And we must do so in every constituency. Saint Kitts one to eight, Nevis nine to eleven. In other words, for this upcoming election, we want a clean sweep. And I am counting on you to deliver in relation to that. What we have been able to achieve, so many good things in housing, thousands of persons who in years gone by would only would have been lucky to get a piece of topolin after hurricane. Some of them now have brand-new houses thanks to the compassion of a Team Unity government. You compare Saint Kitts to America. In Puerto Rico right now, people still living without lights on the topolin. But here in Saint Kitts and Nevis, your government has assisted thousands of ordinary people, improved their lives, improved their homes. You therefore are being urged to return this government so we can continue the programme which we have started and which have benefited so many. And yet, the success of that programme has pointed to the weaknesses in the housing stock that the Labour Party left behind after twenty years. And them fellows ain't gonna shame. No shame at all because they want to compare twenty long years with five short years. But we are ready to compare because five years of delivery by Team Unity is better than twenty years under labour. And we rejected them on the sixteenth of February. And having rejected that, we're not going back to the same old something. It's the same old Douglas. It's the same old leadership. It's the same lazy Marcella. It's the same Steve Wensford. Nothing has changed. Indeed, we really can't go back. And constituency number four can't go back to what Douglas Labour is offering. Why you going back there? You know the history. In nineteen ninety-five, an old retired teacher in Rupert Herbert emerged on the political scene. At the time of the contest within the party, Steve Wensford's name was put up. Herbert's name was put up. And people were saying, "Yeah, put the old man in them kinda time, yeah, this a young people time." And would you believe the old man lick up Wensford way back in nineteen ninety-five? In two thousand, the polls showed that Wensford had no traction in constituency number four. In twenty-ten, Wensford had no traction compared to Glenn Gosphilip. And therefore, if twenty in nineteen ninety-five, Steve Wensford is a waste of time. Two thousand, he was a la. Two thousand four, he was a la. Twenty-ten, he was a la. How come in twenty-twenty, they could put forward a Steve Wensford to represent people in number four? They have no shame and they have no respect. And how I know they have no respect for him? A day he was passing down College Street and a young fellow saw Wensford coming down. Wensford is a man of low energy, no fault of his, he just can't do better. A good friend of mine. And he coming down and he got on this big shot. He got on, he juggles. And a young fellow pulling mother's shirt, "Mother, a long time, mina sipinda, hinda, Wensford." Look what Wensford has done for himself. So whenever you see Wensford, "Mother, a long time, mina sipinda." A long time, mina sipinda. And it's just the night I ax him, Sean. Sean, last you see, when last you see, Mister Pinda. Pinda now round town. So Pinda now gone in. The Labour Party bring a candidate that already gone in. I say to you that for the safer and stronger future which we promised this country, in number four, you must fold Lindsay Grant for sure. Because you ask yourself, if since nineteen ninety-five, Steve Wensford couldn't make the grade. Because you ask yourself, if since 1995, Steve Wensford couldn't make the grade against the retired man, he couldn't make the grade against Glenn Gosse, oh lardo, oh lardo. They should not bring back Wensford now. And when somebody asks him, "Well, why is it?" He can put himself in a politics. Because the person know, well, really, politics not for Wensford. But truth be told, you could hardly find a career that Wensford should, should be told. So Wensford say, person say, "Well, Wensford, you're going in a politics and you know you up to your neck in a debt." He said, "Well, Douglas promised him that when if he gets into power, the social security gonna write it off." So Wensford now is in arrears with the Social Security Board. And he wants to go to represent you because he's working on the false promise from the man that if he get in, social security will run it off. That will never happen. But it tells us that the Douglas Labour Party has not changed. Same old gimmicks, same old tricks, same old parasitical approach to government and governance. And we will not let it happen. And you, the people in number four, will not allow it to happen. So Steve Wensford, if you could put aside a little of your pension, go pay off the social security, the money. And it must never be that he is looking an easy way out and social security hustling down, the small contractors send them to pay. And Steve Wensford presenting himself to represent you and have the brass tacks to say he's shadow Minister Finance and he can't even count his own money. Doesn't know how to spend money. And that is why it is important, you know, that we consider the virtues that they will bring to high office. Steve is my friend, I love Steve, but Steve is my friend. His sister and I work together, so I have no ill will against him. He make a bad decision and he could still redeem himself from it. I mean, when Steve was having all the problem with Douglas, and it is really a shame he gone back with Douglas. Steve was having problems. Steve purchased the property Simaco, you all know. The depot up by the electricity. And I went to talk to, to Steve. Looking for the, with my arm, no foul. I went to look for Steve. And I go and I gone in the place, I noticed nobody around. Nobody around. So I looking for Steve and I go by the property. And me a look, me can't see no Steve. Me a look, me can't see no supper. Me a look so thin. And I feel something strange in here, look like he want a bottle lamp because me can't see no good on the thing. Steve took a profitable business, ran it to the ground. His electricity at Simaco gone. Simaco at that spot was popular hardest nose for the sale of coal storage, one of the most popular spot. And Steve took a successful venture, an opportunity to make money and it run it to the ground. I go in, it's when I coming out, Steve girlfriend a call me, "Look how we down here, look how we down here," she a call. I couldn't see them from the phone. I want to thank her for calling me back because I didn't see them. It's not the kind of representation in modern day 2020, you are going to give an opportunity to represent you. You can trust that with the successful management of his law firm by Lindsay Grant. You can trust that with the successful management as manager and leader of several sporting organization. You can trust that, that Lindsay has a proven track record as the best minister of tourism in Senkitz and Neves. How then, you are going to say you are look back to a man who wasn't worthy since 1995? He's still unworthy now. And no matter how they try to dress up Steve, Steve will twist up his tie because that's just Steve. It will not work. It cannot work. And so I've come to encourage you to give the fullest support to the Honorable Lindsay Grant in number four. I want to commend him for his contribution to making our economy stronger than we inherited it. It is the success of the tourism plant over the last five years that have helped us to develop a buffer so we were able to pay off the debt to the IMF in one stroke in a blow, left behind the legacy of indebtedness of the last regime. When we would have paid off our debt, we were then free to do the things that were needed to be done for you. Nobody could have come from Washington DC and direct us not to pay the $500 a month which we are paying to you, your family, your friends. Nobody could stop us. Because we know owe them a copper. So they can't tell us not to pay out that money. And we are not going to any bank to borrow. We are paying it from the successful management of Senkitz and Neves. Having paid off the IMF debt, we were able to invest the most significant sums in repairing people home. It allows Alice from Central Pasture to come to the office of our Prime Minister with a list of this and that. I want you to help this, give Alice a round of applause. Alice could dance and them down because she has a government that responds and listens and importantly, in the eyes of the Prime Minister, no one is too small to not to listen for us not to listen to them. Ah, Alice have some more, they ain't gonna write down too much. We are able to do these things for you because we have worked hard on your behalf. And most importantly, God has blessed Senkitz and Neves. We are now a model country. What we are doing here, Jamaica not doing it, Antigua not doing it. In fact, the other day, the Prime Minister of Antigua said, "Well, the competition will be between Antigua and Senkitz for coal storage." But we are ahead of the game. We're doing everything right in Senkitz and Neves. So you have a government about which you can be proud and feel comfortable. We are working hard, but we need your continuing support and your prayer. I want to thank those pastors from throughout the island that came and announced to government headquarters today to pray God blessings upon our country and upon our government. Nearly twelve of them came. And they say, "Prime Minister," one of them said, "My wish is that you will continue to show you have a heart like God. A heart for service, a heart to do well on behalf of the people of Senkitz and Neves. And a reminder of a scripture, you are doing a good job and you will not come down." You will not come down. All who need help, we are trying to help. Sometime we have to be creative, sometime we have to spread the love, sometime you want a full range of concessions. We have to say, "Well, what if somebody come after, give you some, give the next person some?" Some people like to get all for themselves, but not so life go. We are a family and we have to show kindness and respect and help each other. So I want to thank you. I want to commend Minister Hamilton for his help in our housing program. We have built some big houses, spacious bedrooms because we are concerned about the dignity of our people, that they have their privacy and their self-respect. And we are doing all of these things because we have a heart just like Papa Jesus. That is what happened, a heart of compassion. When we introduced the $500, an elderly lady called me, "Give me medication." This your name, Timothy? And so she a tell me. And look at the paper, say, "Doctor, must she write up me name wrong, the cabinet went to the doctor." The thing got the right name. But she's saying that she's grateful to you, Prime Minister, because now as a result of this $500, I can get my medication each month on my own. She don't even have to wait on children. For the children nowadays, as far as they concerned, they on their own page. You have to look for yourself. Thank God you have a compassionate government that is there to help you. And that is what we have been doing. And we shall continue to do that. I want to say to you that the things that we have done in the past must give you confidence that your government in the future can do even better. It took us time to clean up the mess left behind. It's took us time to recognize that the Labour Party owed the government of Venezuela for the fuel that they use at Skelek and they left behind a debt of nearly $200 million. Nearly $200 million. That was a vagabond government, taking, taking, taking and not paying. Those kind of people in the old time days, you put up a sign, "No credit, bad debt, kill it." That is what happened, damaged the reputation and we came in as a government. And we said, "Listen, we will sit with you, our records show that we received the fuel. It is not in our nature to credit and not to pay." And we set about an arrangement to pay the government of Venezuela for the near $200 million the vagabond government left behind. We do that for you. We do that because we love our country dearly and there is no other place we would rather be than Senkitz and Neves. Some of them got Dominican passport, they can go there at any time. They're not caring about Senkitz and Neves once they're not in power. Every day they try to find a bad news to put out. If a cruise ship for your own safety, for the protection of the taxi operators, we have to say to them, "You have been to a country which have the virus. You have not left there for the fourteen day period that you should basically be in quarantine. We can't risk it." You see, the taxi men may get $200, $300, even $1,000. But what good would that be if you have to end up spending more than that to secure your health? And we are concerned. And that is why a couple of them, we say, "No." After speaking with the doctors, we spoke with Dr. Wilkerson, we spoke with Dr. Saheli, we spoke with Dr. Jeffers, we brought all the best doctors in the country to a meeting of the cabinet with our chief medical officers. And they told us, "Our advice to you is to say no, do not chance it. Do not put that stress on the health system." And instead, they commend the government, they ma rejoice. "La, the ship canceled, but the people are living healthy." They look to the four ships coming, they weren't, hadn't gone to any area from which the passengers needed to be quarantined. Then I say, "No, no." Because they are building their political career and bad things happening in the country. You know, last year, how some of them said they ma pray for hurricane, but God no answer them kind of prayer. God no answer them kind of prayer. And you can't imagine how people who want to lead a country take pride in seeing the worst thing happening to it. They want to see the country at war because they want to make that their table talk. They want to go on Freedom Radio, they want to get it on their WhatsApp and to sell it all over to scandalize the country. And now the country is in peace, abundant. They works with us. And so they are doing everything to disrupt the peace. Tell them the peace is real, the peace is a blessing of God. And the nation is praying every day that Senkitz remain a model of good governance, of peace and prosperity. And no matter what they say, the peace will continue. This year, we put $99 million for national security. Largest ever amount in the history of the country. We put it there so that the Sisi TV program could be in Challengers, could be in Old World, could be in DAP, could be in Tabernacle, could be all around Senkitz and Neves. So at a time when nobody want to give a statement, we have an alternative pair of eyes from which we can collect the evidence. We have invested $99 million in national security to build out our forensic lab because nowadays the DNA and all the forensic evidence have become critical in our fight against crime. We have invested $99 million so that we could bring on a group of young people and put them in our tourism passports as island constable, providing an extra cover of security to our passengers at Port Sante, to the visitors in the Anglican Church and Independence Square. We have invested heavily in the peace of the land. We have invested $99 million so that we can build out an explorers' club of young people, giving them something, an organized structure so after school, the parents know where the young people are. In the good old days, it was by the gates. In the good old days, it was Barbie Kids and Brownie and Gold Skies. Them thing they're not so fashionable now, regrettably. And we have come up with something where the police officers are providing leadership to that effort. Today, the largest group, the largest organization of young people is the Explorers Club and it has now near one thousand young people that are in it. That is what we have done and that is what we are building out. We are getting material for them. You see, some of them on the Independence Parade making your heart proud. And by starting there, we are trying to cut them off from a life of guns and drugs and crime. We are telling them that the police officers are your brothers, your sisters, your friends, your mentors. So for the future, the challenge that we have now, we should never have again because we are building a better citizenry, ready for nation building. In closing then, apart from coming to give support to the Honorable Lindsay Grant, a critical member of the team, I have come really to say to you, "Come help us in this task of nation building." We need all of you, all of you wherever you are, the sons and daughters to be part of a constructive effort of nation building. We will use the resources that we have amassed over the last five years to launch the most successful program involving our young people. We will ensure that young people will get a special prize on their land. I was walking out the figure there with Sean, but Sean figures look wrong relative to mine and mine is the right one, so I give him time to go over it. So going forward, you will get a piece at Iraq. For too long, the preference of the former government was to give special prizes to cooks and bandits like Alan Stanford up at the airport, ten cent for prime land and they have you going at four dollars. That is what they did. They took forty-three million, sent it over to the peninsula when they could have pumped that into a fresh start program. Next week, we will have the signing ceremony, we will put five million dollars more available in the bank to assist small businesses. As part of our commitment to building bigger and brighter homes, hopefully by next weekend, we will have transferred thirty million dollars for a new build-out of housing, not just for government employees, for any one of you. So if you want your house repaired, the funds will be there for you. If you want to add a room, the funds will be there for you and we will try to make it as easy as possible for you. This is a government then on which you can rely. This is a government on which you can trust. This is a government for the young people and we will meet their ambitions and expectation in music, in dance and all areas of cultural development. We will stand by the people. We will stand for your justice as we have always done. We remain committed to work hard to make Senkitz and Neves. But Marcus Garvey envisaged that Senkitz and Neves not as the mother colony of the Caribbean, but as the garden. Think of it, the Garden of Eden, the garden, all the good things can come to Senkitz and Neves under a Team Unity government. And I ask you then to give every member of the Team Unity Administration a round of applause. The Honorable Lindsay Grant, the Honorable Van Sayney, the Honorable Jean Hamilton, Ambassador John L. Powell, Senator Akilah Byron-Nisbet, our Deputy Prime Minister, the Honorable Sean Richards, the Honorable Vincent Byron, the Honorable Senator Fitz, the Honorable E.M. Patrisse Liber, the Honorable Mark Grantley and all the others who have given us such wonderful support. But the biggest round of applause, the biggest round is for you, is for you because you made it happen on September sixteen and I'm counting on you. I am counting on you. I shall ring the bell. I shall ring the bell. And I am so happy that the poppy show bell that they had said they may go ring. Nobody respond to that because they're not the head teacher. They're not the head teacher this time, so nobody take on that bell in good time, in good time. And I will tell them this much, before the twelfth of August twenty twenty, we shall be in general elections in Senkitz and Neves. God bless you and thanks again for your support.
Give another round of applause for our Prime Minister, the Honorable Dr. Timothy Harris. Harris again. Indeed, a vote for Team Unity is a vote for a stronger, safer future. I have an announcement. Well, it seems like constituency number four likes breakfast because this Saturday at six AM to nine AM, there'll be a breakfast on five AM? I, I was so six AM. Well, five or six AM, there'll be a breakfast at the Green Tree Lawn hosted by constituency number four. At just a mere cost of twenty dollars. So indeed, we encourage everyone from around Senkitz and Neves to come and take part. At this point in time, we'll have what I think many of you have been waiting for, an opportunity to ask your questions to the members of parliament here today, the Team Unity representatives. Please, I am told that the questions are to be brief and I can see everyone lining up as I speak to give their question.
Good night to everybody, to Mr. Emery or who will take over from you. Social Security have a lot of contributors. If anything like that have to do again or any other payout like Carl asks about, please work on, please wait until you all complete, then you all say, "For twenty years, they did not do nothing like that or think about that and arguing they can't wait and must set tanks instead of using the Prime Minister and is everything they in and getting, they must say something good for once." "Prime Minister, please consider when election day, please who can't go to vote but want to vote, please send an agent to them. They must send their names to the electoral office. Please think about it and if the counting can do at the same place of voting because Mr. Mr. Hamilton last box came in nine AM. We don't want nothing happen like what happened in Guyana. I am just suggesting no cane field. Mr. Hamilton have no fear, a lot of sun and rain right now, no dew." I am, I am saying to the ministers, these are people who come into the town hall, they, they're not hiding and they don't want nobody to see them. Ministers, when they come to you all, please don't give them no runaround. What coming to Senkitz is for all of us, so that don't mean I can't say nothing. Mr. Grant still waiting about the land and Mrs. Akila, I wish you all the best.
Good night, everyone. Good night, Mr. PM. Good night to the head table. My name is Clyde Webster, a constituent of number four. Mr. PM, I would like to thank you immensely for this opportunity that you would have given to us here in number four. I personally, I have waited over five years to have this conversation with Lindsay Grant face to face. So I am quite grateful for this opportunity that I could interact with Mr. Grant in the presence of your entire cabinet. Mr. PM, I heard a lot of things tonight and I'm quite grateful, but I also haven't heard many things too, to which I'm very concerned. Now, I would be interacting with Mr. Grant and I'll be asking Mr. Grant serious questions to which I hope Mr. Grant and members of the head table would be able to give me truthful answers and straight answers tonight in here. Let me say for the record, Mr. Grant, I'm going to be addressing you and I'll be going to your credibility. So the questions asked, you could lie, you could bullshit them if you want, no problem, but they're going to come to you in other forms.
Mr. Webster?
So the first question, the first question.
Three questions, just three questions.
I have waited over five years to ask Lindsay Grant questions. I have given Lindsay Grant a job. Many people in number four has given Lindsay Grant a job. Hold on, shut up. This is my town. This is my house. This is my house. Shut up. This is my house. I give Grant a job. How many of us get a job from Grant?
Mr. Webster?
How many of us? Shut up. This is our time in four.
Mr. Webster?
This is our time in four. And we're going to ask our questions either here or somewhere else and you will answer them. So let's go. Number one.
Okay, okay. Allow Mr. Webster to ask his questions. Allow Mr. Webster to ask his questions. Mr. Grant?
Since February twenty fifteen, since February twenty fifteen, we voted for you. We gave you the golden opportunity you begged us for. Countless numbers of constituents would have approached you to seek simple, simple services and opportunities. Your signature statement to them is, "My hands are tied and the Prime Minister tie me hand them." Tonight, tonight in here, justify by giving us specifics as to how the Prime Minister tie your hand them. That's the first question. Mr. Webster, can you kindly allow other persons, if you look behind you, there's a very long line with persons waiting to ask questions? Can you kindly allow someone else to ask his or her questions? And once that has been completed, you will get the opportunity to ask further questions. Mr. Richards, I have waited five years to talk to the man that I voted for and his ungratefulness, this is what the reward is like. We have to get him.
Okay, let's settle back down. Let's settle back down. We still have the town hall here this evening and we have many people to ask questions. Next question, please. Next question. Okay, let's calm down. Okay, let's not add to the fury. Let's contain ourselves. The situation has already been addressed. Next question, please.
We need to move on with the meeting. We are asking persons kindly to be quiet and allow other persons to ask their questions. To the lady at the mic, kindly proceed, please.
Good night, everyone. Um, my question is directed to the Attorney General. Um, I'm a big fan of social media, what persons have to say concerning our issues in the country. And I've seen on social media that Judge Ventos, he actually was, um, given four hundred thousand, um, dollars for legal work for the labor team in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. We would like to know if this is being investigated, what is the truth to the matter? We would like to have answers on that.
Okay, next question.
Hello, my name is Victoria Barkham Berkeley.
Guys, we need to hear.
And I represent Halfway Tree. And first of all, I would like to commend. I would like to commend Team Unity for the excellent job under Dr. Timothy Harris that you have done for this country. I remember I was in this same room when I asked you all about Old Road, Old Road Bay, the last time I was in this room. Yes, you were, you were, you took me home. And now, look, we went from no road to a real road in Old Road Bay under Team Unity. Congratulations. I also want to commend the two ladies, Wendy and Akila, that you have on board. It's really good to see you all representing the women in the country and I hope you much success, Akila, in winning your seat. And Wendy, you are just a gem, man. People have been talking so highly about you and how professional you are. I'm really proud of you, I tell you, it makes me feel really good. So now I'm gonna get down to what I came for. I have really two places that are in my heart, number two and then number four. Now I do a lot of work with number two, with the same former gangsters that you all have now gainfully employed and put to work.
Thank you.
Team Unity did that. However, there is a housing shortage in number two. They need decent housing. I've been going up and down through the alleys because a lot of my youth live in I've been going up and down through the alleys because a lot of my youth live in the alleys, and looking at the houses in which the people in number two, and the alleys are clean, the neighborhoods are clean now, but they need decent housing, you all have got to get that together. You already dealing well with the criminal element, but now you gotta take care of the social element, you gotta make them feel worthy, you gotta make them feel welcome, and they need housing, so please make sure, you make sure, number two, the residents get decent housing. Which residents? All the alleys, oh well, no, I'm not talking particularly about Prickly Pear Alley, but overall, people in Prickly Pear still need housing too, yes. So now, back to my own constituency, I'm glad to hear that Grant said that he's gonna put the road into the projects in half, in Harry Phillips Road and in the other project that was there. You also Mister Grant owe me a visit still, do not think I have forgotten that you forgot to come to see me, I'm not gonna let you forget, but what I think Carl Brown said is very important, he was talking about constituency councils, because the reality is, you all are too busy to see everybody who has a need, but we still need to be heard, so there has to be in each constituency an avenue where we can have our voices heard. We don't always wanna come to the little meetings, we don't be at the bars, so there has to be a way we can come and speak to you when we have a need. So I hope that this will be put on your agenda all, because it's not just for you, it's for all of us, we need to be able to get in touch with you.
Okay.
Okay, one other thing. Thank you, thank you, thank you all for approving that five million, has it been approved? The five million dollars for the youth entrepreneurs and the small businesses, thank you so much, Doctor Timothy Harris and Team Unity.
Okay, we're gonna have, thank you, we're gonna have two more questions before we allow the ministers to address the concerns and questions, so, one, two.
Good night at the head table, um, permit me to say this please, um, pardon me? My name is, um, Yannick Warner, from constituency number four. Um, permit me to say this, um, I want to endorse the government, the Unity government, to empower young people around. To empower young people around the constituency, around St. Kitts, with jobs and housing, and I just want to say this, um, to the Unity government, I would like to know, um, that, with housing, because Mister Lindsay Grant, I keep going see you, keep going see you, and you say don't give me a call, so I'm still waiting for you, because I want to be in power with a house as well too, you understand? Because your guys has been blessed to be in government, and I assure you guys is praying and prophesying to go back into government, so I would like your guys to bless me with a house, so thank you.
Protocol has already established, and, um, as I say, protocol has been established, and I just wanna say, things that I'm hearing tonight, it's very uplifting, the most important thing I've, I will be taking away from this is that the name of God been very prevalent in this, um, meeting. My name is Georgiana Romney Richards, and my concern tonight is the fishery land in Old Road that was taken from the people over fifteen years ago, and up to now, no one has addressed that situation about giving exchange of property for what they have taken. I was in St. Thomas and a message came to me in St. Thomas that a Mister Williams from the fishery is looking for me, because Mister King, Dolphus King in Old Road, after they were looking for the people who owned the land or lived on the land for all these years, and they wanted to get in touch with them to let them know what they plan to do. It happened that my husband was in St. Kitts at the same time, and Mister Williams was passing to challengers, and Miss Emile Davis says, "Here's her husband," because Mister King recommended her. We had that house, well, Brother Hogan, we, my, my father was a man, one of the managers in Stoneford, and because of that, we lived in, I was born in Old Road, but we lived in Stoneford, so the house was there, Brother Hogan live in the house, everybody know Brother Hogan, lived in the house for a while, then it stayed there and deteriorated because we didn't live there. Now they were looking for me because I was the only one that Mister King knew that was related to that. I took all kind of documents, the only document I don't have is a deed, the last document they asked me to get is a recommendation, and Godless Sir Probin Nenis, before he died, he gave me a recommendation and I sent it to them, and up to yet, nobody's saying anything, and I don't think it's fear, so say something, you ain't getting it or you getting it, that's my stance on it, and I thank you all very much, I wish you all all the blessings that God can give.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to allow the ministers to address the questions that have been asked, and I think that the questions were directed to the Honorable Lindsay Grant and also the Honorable Vincent Byron Junior, the Attorney General. So I'm going to allow Mister Grant to go first. Our Attorney General, the Attorney General will go first.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your questions. I want to address Kai here, Johnson, on a very important reference to something that happened over the last few days. I want to say at the outset, that it is most unfortunate that our people in St. Kitts have to understand that we must respect the judiciary. Our country is built on a system of laws. We are very proud that the government and people of St. Kitts and Nevis are ranked number one in the O E C S for the rule of law, and the rule of law is one in which we obey the laws, and those who sit on tribunals to oversee those laws. And it is most unfortunate that a fake profile posting on the social media has made what can be interpreted as threats against a judge of the High Court. This is unacceptable, and we will call on all our citizens to rally to support the judiciary and the government, and we must stop that. The idea that we can openly want to attack a judge, demeans all of us, we have to respect the judiciary. If someone is dissatisfied with the ruling of the court, the recourse that we have is to go to another court, we appeal. This is how this government came to power. You will recall that five years ago, when it was that there was an interlocutory injunction placed against the very funny transactions, the destiny actions of the Labour government to change the boundary in this country, that we applied to the court and they put an injunction on any change to Douglas boundaries. It was overturned eventually, it went up to a Court of Appeal, putting out granted us, and we went to another court, and they reinstated those, the injunction against Douglas boundaries. Our protection against any breach of our individual rights lays with the court, and we must rally and support our judiciary. If there is an issue with the judiciary, we appeal, that is what the rule of lawyers, and I'd want to put on record that the government of St. Kitts and Nevis supports the judiciary in our country, and it must be that we adhere to that, that would be my answer to you.
Thank you Attorney General, we also had a question with housing as it relates to constituency number two, so I will allow Mister, well Ambassador General Powell to answer that.
Good evening, good evening everybody. Uh, as it relates to the question on housing in number two, uh, as you would know, Central Basia is the tiniest, by far the tiniest constituency, and so available land for housing is very scarce. One of the other things you would recognize as well is that the majority of land, the vast majority of land is actually privately owned. However, the Team Unity administration is in the process of embarking upon an herbal renewal program, not just in Central Basia, but in other constituencies, for example, constituency number one, and that would encompass, um, new housing programs that will help to improve upon the housing stock in these areas, the Mattnights, the Irish Towns, the Greenlands, where you have a lot of old abandoned buildings, where you have a lot of old buildings, um, that are derelict. Your Team Unity administration is going to create opportunities for the people in those, in those areas to have bigger and better housing. The program will also allow for commercial spaces for people to have shops and businesses and all of that. You go through, it's a lot of old abandoned, um, lots and, and old buildings, the government will do what it has to do to make those available to people and to make a brand new Basia. As the Prime Minister keeps saying, we want our capital to be a capital that is envied by everybody else in the Caribbean and in the world, we want a Basia that is like no other capital, and your Team Unity administration will provide that to the people of St. Kitts and Nevis.
Thank you Ambassador Powell, we now invite our representative here in constituency number four, the Honorable Lindsay Grant, to address the questions asked.
Well, yes, good evening to all, um, my old English teacher used to tell me, sometimes, that what I'm thinking is a figment of my imagination. Um, I don't know where Mister Webster is going with this statement that he made, but what I would say is that if Mister Webster has concerns, he knows where my office is and my doors are open.
Thank you Mister Grant, Honorable Lindsay Grant, we now continue with the questions, and we invite Bucky to ask his question.
Yeah, good night.
Wait.
Through the land, the fisheries land by Georgiana, could I hear your title, your Romney Richards, thanks, I'll have the A G answer that. Thank you very much. Um, Miss Richards, this matter is one that is very longstanding, if I recall, it goes back some six, fifteen, sixteen years, and it is one that has had some iterations, it has recently been brought to our chambers, um, it may have been there, it would have been resurrected, and now that you're visiting, I take you're visiting from the Virgin Islands, I would invite you to come to our chambers and talk to one of our Crown Council and walk it through, because there are certain issues that needs to be, um, clarified. As you say, there is not, as far as I recall, there's not a title for the land, so therefore there's not a registered owner for this land, and so that is something that has to be clarified and worked out, but you'll have to visit the chambers, the Attorney General's chambers at Church Street, and the Crown Council will have to deal with it, certainly.
This is enlightening for people now, because our older generation never tells us what is what, they ain't tell you if they have a piece of paper here or a piece of paper there, so I'm admonishing you younger people. I, I, I came to St. Kitts to celebrate my birthday, my birthday was Saturday, I made seventy-
Happy birthday, happy birthday.
I made seventy-three years. There is no, there is no place I feel relaxed than in St. Kitts.
Yes.
When I get off a yacht, a sunshine or whatever, I forget how St. Thomas look, I am relaxed when I'm home, so if you all could give me the piece of land so I could do something, I feel better.
What I would say, Miss Richards, is that the matter, that some, um, people who were settled, but there is still an unfinished business there, but we need to have more information from you, and I invite you to come to the chambers where we can deal with that, okay? Thank you. What we will do, Miss Richards, we will sort you out with a piece of land somewhere before your cabal, we will sort you. On Church Street at Government Headquarters, okay?
Okay. We'll now ask Bucky to ask his question.
Yeah, good night, let's settle down, we've been here, and I have a long line behind of me, just wanna say good night to the folks, and if you don't know me, I'm Bucky Got It and Bucky I've Got It, uh, yeah, it's me, yeah, and to the lovely PM, Dolphine made one of the sweetest fish soup, so the head is very sweet, and I'm happy that this lovely group here have chosen you to be the leader, and I see you have your followers like Jonah always here, meetings after meetings. But tonight is my representative, the Honorable Lindsay Grant, and I just wanna clear some things up, because he get licks on his tan form, he short, but he like he's a tall coconut tree, because he moving. Mister Grant, you need to be more boasting, cause you have given people jobs that many don't know, I've seen you pave the road in Vortals, so people who have housed there and people who are going to build house already have the road, that's something you didn't talk about, you haven't talked about the museum, which is soon gonna be ready, and let me tell you all, it's gonna name after Masood Siddiqui, the late Masood Siddiqui. But Mister Grant is not a boasting person, he don't boast, I don't know why, people say I don't see him, I see him every day, I go by the bar, he there, you understand? Sometimes I go on my road, he driving, that's my minister, the Honorable Lindsay Grant. In trade, he are doing good business in trade, don't talk about tourism, he mentioned it tonight, and with his team from the head, the Honorable Mister Timothy Harris come all the way down to the Ambassador General Powell, who's gonna mash up the music festival, to Honorable Eugene Hamilton, Akila Byron is soon coming, deputy, Mister Deputy, our- Deputy, Mr. Deputy, our lights is there in Vortals, it's gonna come. These are things that the minister is working on, but like I said, he is not boasting, so many of you do not know. So I just want to say, keep up the good works and be a bit more boasting in what you're doing for constituency number four.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey L. Donovan. I personally don't want anything. I can take care myself. But I want to see the country continue to move forward as Team Unity is doing right now. We are not going to leave Team Unity, who is giving plenty, to go back to SKN almost empty. Alright?
Good evening. Good evening to the head table. My name is Shona Billingshurst. And before I start, I just want to sing one verse of a song that I wrote for our decent PM. Anywhere Tim lead us, we will go. Cause he is a real true, truly leader. Timo, you paid double for times in a row. We will not turn our backs. We won't be ungrateful. We are gonna follow you, Timo. Anywhere you lead us, we are gonna go. Timo. You make the country happy, so happy. You know why? The roof empowerment program and the five hundred dollar. The second pier and the bus terminals. We like it all. We like the way you dey lead us all. And if I want the rest, come to Pam Convention. I am here tonight to publicly thank the Honorable Lindsay Grant. Last year April, I was chosen to go to Miami Sea Trade Global all because of the Honorable Lindsay Grant. The previous administration to them, we were just some girls on the beach robbing tourists with alo. But because of the hard work and the dedication and compassion of the Honorable Lindsay Grant, he took the time and he molded us and he shaped us into where we are today. Today, we stand tall as ambassadors to our country. We're not just girls on the beach robbing tourists to make a quick dollar. We are selling our country. We stand tall and proud. And we are, you need to boast for three, you know, we are boastful. Mr. Grant, the weapons them gonna farm and they gonna come, but they ain't gonna touch you. You know why? Right down this Exodus chapter fourteen, verse fourteen. The Lord will fight your battle and you will hold your peace. You will hold your peace, Mr. Grant. I was the prodigal daughter, but I reached back home in full force and me back broad. I could take anything. I rallying head behind a Eugene Hamilton. That's my rep. And all my Unity friend them, when I used to talk to, I talking back to them. You know why? We have an election to win. We got to put aside petty things and focus on putting back in Team Unity into government. I gonna, I gonna give somebody else a son. Akilah, love you. Good night to everyone. And to Shona, Shona, I love Akilah more than you. I would like to say to my representative, Mr. Grant, a job well done. And yes, I'm the one who assist in the HAB program for the children in Harfetree. And I can tell you, about two weeks ago, somebody came to me and asked me, how much money is Mr. Grant paying you? I said, Mr. Grant paying me for what? The HAB program. I said, I don't need pay. It is not even about Mr. Grant, it's about the children. We have to help them because later on in life, they are going to live in society with us. So we have to help them. Mr. Grant, it's an honor to help you. Sometimes I'm tired, but I go through it. Another thing, Mr. Prime Minister, I don't think civil servants, they give you, what must I say? Or the cabinet, the honor they supposed to. I'm one of the persons who suffered with not getting the increment. It was very small, but we look forward to it every year. And when that increment froze, I was mad. Because you had to step back. You know, I can be honest with you, when the increments, when we knew increment was due, you're going to Hartford, wow. I'm gonna take out the bed card, the increment, I'm gonna pay for the bed. And I, I mean, when the former administration took away the increment, pure insult, Mr. Prime Minister. Because the increment is only a hundred and something dollars a year. Could you imagine robbing that from civil servants? And I'm going to be forever grateful for that increment. Another thing I'm looking at and recognize, I don't have personally recognizing, but a lot of teachers, I'm talking on behalf of teachers. They were, I think they are so grateful now in terms of teachers got houses now. They have houses, project houses. I can count them. I had about six teachers who I taught with were able to benefit from a project house. They had the land and the houses were built for them. And we are so grateful. We take things for granted, but we are grateful. And I'm gonna say this before I close. I met a young lady, maybe about three weeks ago. And I asked, how you doing? Because Mr. Prime Minister, anyway, I go, he come like I can't help the campaigning thing. And I said, how things going with you? And she said, me voting for nobody. I say, you're not voting for anyone? Why? When I wanted three things, and I'm gonna tell you all I wanted. I wanted a house. They give me the house, buddy. I wanted a music festival ticket. I get it, but the same man ain't gonna ham, so me not vote. Now, now let's be serious here. It might, it might be a joke. It might sound jokey to us. But I think some of us have gotten to grab. It's a lot of greed. Okay? And I think we should be thankful. I don't know where we came from. I don't, sorry, I don't know when we came to that point where we always want one and we want it now, but we need to stop it. No, we are blessed. There are teachers who I'm working with, they are from foreign, I know one especially from San Lucia. I used to work with and she'll say, girl, you got teachers in San Lucia's want to come here to work all because we don't get the double. They don't get nothing double, they don't want names, huh? We are so grateful, Mr. Prime Minister, that double salary they coming is so handy. I am grateful and I had to say, we are gonna go our ups and downs. You're not gonna be perfect, but keep pushing through. I see me boss laughing after me. Mr. Richards, you laughing at me? Okay then. So have a good night, all have the best. Akilah, love you, see?
Thank you.
I want to say a pleasant good evening to everyone. And my name is Veronica Burnier from constituency number four. Twenty sixteen, I apply for tour operator, a company. Now, I have a youngster, I have a family of three. But my son Stephen Burn is very much interesting. He always walk with me since he's small coming down at Port Zante. In December, he did the exam. He been going back and forth to get just a little ID to work with his mother. The police harassed him, come off the truck, you ain't got no ID. And you know, if you want to uplift the youths, my son is also a youth. I went over Tamanakul asking for the same thing. Prime Minister, Timothy Harris, you assure me you would assist me. I went back to Lindsay Grant. Lindsay Grant told me I do not have three vehicles. Now I have three vehicles. Over a year, I cannot get a number to run my other vehicle. And it's a very sad situation when you guys put people through a lot and expect the best out of us. Mr. Lindsay Grant, stand up and be a man. You're telling my son all the time, the ID is there, but yet the people in authority with you are denying my son to work with me. I am asking you tonight to look into it again. Don't tell me that. You don't tell me that.
Okay.
I, I, I came here tonight because I've been going back and forth in Lindsay Grant office. I, I did right and I got an answer. I am not asking a job from government because a lot of people cannot be dependent, independent. But I can stand on my own two feet. I am not asking for money. I am just asking for my business to grow again and again and again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone in the head table.
Okay, settle down.
Yeah, good evening. My name is Fadha. Most people know me as that. So for Mr. Grant, I want to say thanks for Mr. Grant because for over fifteen years, Mr. Grant, you are sponsor of KFC Trinity team, football team. We've been in and out of the premium, we're doing well. Never disappoint us. Anything that we ask for, you deliver. And also, I want to thank you because many time we ain't got problem with lights and you tell me once you do, you get it done. And the people in that city can't see, they don't understand because every Monday night you have meeting, as long as you ain't have cabinet or you in an island. So if they really want to see you, they'll find you. You understand? Some people tell me they ain't going all road. But then they'll find themselves going care and going dance, all kind of place. But something that they want, that they say is important, they're not going.
Okay.
So I want to tell you, thanks for your leadership in this community and you always deliver. Because up to when you tell me Saturday, you was up and down finding some way, some kind of road to go where you want to build these houses. And this land we want to deliver. I was so proud. You understand? To see that you ain't know the area, but you're driving all around and going because of the difficulty you had with the gums. And we must, we must be proud of him because for years the man want to build some houses, but he gained all kind of that boat. Also, building board gave him some trouble up there because they said they ain't know where the water going and it gonna flood out challenges. He said, okay, I'm going back to the giant boat because I want to deliver some houses. I promise them. And I want to thank you for that. And Mr. Richards, I wanted to look into this one because your team normally practice armed boys as well, the community team, Trinity team. But from since last year, we had a problem with the lights on there. So right now we ain't gonna light because the thing burnt out the fuse. So we like, if we could get a rectify please and the ground cut because we have a game on this seventeenth on there for six o'clock. But I don't think that will be possible. But we have one for three o'clock and the twenty fourth, awesome around there. So if we could deal with the lights for us, we must appreciate it. And thanks again. Akilah, you come to here many time and you try your best in many ways. You call, you call all kind of people from Skelek, everybody and you try your best to help us with the light. And I want to thank you. Keep on trying and you're gonna be there.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick reminder, you have to keep your questions very brief, under a minute, no more than a minute. So let's, let's try to stick to that.
Good evening, folks. I want to first adopt the protocol established. And I want to say tonight that I personally would like to thank Team Unity profoundly for saving my life. I want to say tonight that I'm of the firm conviction that we must have the courage to face our problems before we can put them behind us. And tonight, I came to apologize. The last time, the behavior I exhibited in the town hall has no place in my social repertoire. This is a Team Unity Hall. Forgive me, folks. Especially, especially, especially to somebody, Team Unity who came and saved me when everybody thought that I was unsalvageable. Team Unity, folks, has become an unstoppable juggernaut. And anybody who stands opposed to it will be crushed into something that resembles so many ant hillers and mole hellers on the canvas of history. I have a word for Mr. Grant. My labor folks came and they said, alright, we got him now. And guess what? I laugh. I said, they ain't scared. The last time they came, they said, we got Grant. We got the Honorable Grant and we got him on Candid Camera. So they thought we gave him a chance. And guess what happened? He made us number one in the OECD. Mr. Grant, I want to tell you something. Mr. Grant, you are doing a lot. I was his god of a second chance. We came up here and we said fresh start. I want to say that every sinner has a future and every saint has a past. We gonna vote for you. Again, one word for Akilah Byron. Hold up, Akilah Byron. The Lord said, I must tell the people when they think about you to think about ripe and gentle. Ripe Akilah Byron is ravishing intelligent. She is professional. And not that only, she is efficient and ethical, folks. And the Lord say gentle. I say, why gentle Lord? He says, a lesson you need to learn. You're a ruffian. Why gentle Lord? The Lord said, nothing in the world is as strong as gentleness. And nothing is in the world is as strong as real strength. She is soft and she is sup as water. If you pour water in a container, it assumes the shape of the container. It is so soft, but if you give water a million years, it will grind down Mount Everest to sand.
Thank you, Mr. Pemberton. Thank you.
The gains of Conris Maynard and I, your contender. He said, my prime minister said, that contenders father, I'm using it contender as rival.
Mr. Pemberton, wrap up, please.
I'm wrapping up. The prime minister said that Mr. Conrad, Conris Maynard, contender's father is right now salivating in the shadows, hungry for power in closing. If power were bred, you better tell them they got five more years of a breadless diet. Long live Team Unity. Long live Team Unity. We love you. Janelle Powell, we gonna vote for you. And can you forgive me, Eugene Hamilton? I'm here. We can do it again, Lord. Weed out the mercenaries, Lord, as you lead us on to victory, as you did before.
Thank you, Mr. Pemberton. Thank you. Guys, give Mr. Pemberton a round of applause, please. Thank you. Okay, those, we're gonna only have three more questions. So we have three more persons, a question each, just one minute. And Mister Pemberton will have taken up much of the time, so please be brief.
Good night, good, good night to everyone. My name is Shirley Gavi, known in the taxi industry as Queen Manever. Now I'm standing in front of this mic tonight to represent some of my taxi drivers. Now, back in two thousand sixteen, we had a problem. The problem we had was with the safari. They put the safari them inside to collect their own job and they was pulling the safari up and leaving. And we with the ordinary bus was being humble and getting no job from the inside. Well, they took it to the drawing board and they decide that they're gonna let them take sixteen from the dispatching area. Well, I'm a dispatcher and I've been a dispatcher for the past eight years. Now what I'm observing in the dispatching area is the safari people them that come in to collect their job. They collect sixteen on the inside and send twenty on the outside. So it got even worse. This need to be looked into. We are being supervised who have the high roof buses, but then the guys them that have the safari now, they ain't being supervised. So when the tourists come up to them, they will, they will ban some of them, send them out. They tell the tourists, put the ban in your pocket, don't let them see. They will send out ten and then still gather sixteen here and go on. So at the end of the day, they gone out with thirty, forty people. With the high, the people them with the high roof like me and the regular buses are suffering through there, so you all need to look to that.
Thank you. Okay, make your question brief, come on.
Good evening to everyone. Good evening, head table, thank you, guys. I want to thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity here in Number Four. One minute, my friends. First, let me introduce myself. My name is Scott Warner, a taxi driver, a resident of constituency Number Four. So I was born and raised in this constituency, so I'm please asking you persons to let me, you know, vent for a little while. I'm from this constituency, so I think I deserve that opportunity. Now, now first, Mister Prime Minister, I want to thank you, guys, for the infrastructure which you guys have put in. The island is quite beautiful, I must say that, all right? I want to thank you, guys, for that. Now, I stand here tonight in the capacity as a taxi operator and a constituent of constituency Number Four. So you know I have some concerns. Now, I could support what, um, the young lady Queen is saying, I'm a safari operator myself and I see the, um, the mishaps as she, as she so put it. I can strongly support that. So I would, um, I would support, I would, um, actually, you know, talk in support of her. Yes, there's some wrongs going on there. I think the safari, um, rotation could be monitored a lot more better. Now, Mister Grant, now you speak very highly about the, um, the projects around the island when it comes to the development of tourism. But Mister Grant, what about Number Four? What about Number Four? As the Minister of Tourism, I have never heard you say you allocate any monies for the development of the tourism product in constituency Number Four. That is one of my questions, Mister Grant. Another question. Now, Mister Prime Minister, you speak very strongly about the five hundred dollars monthly. But Mister Prime Minister, I think you have to really look at that program. It is not fair when business owners, business, registered business owners are getting the five hundred when persons with no legs, no legs can get this five hundred. It's quite unfair. Some persons, some, but, my friends, I thank for the support, but let me deliver, please. Let me deliver, please, all right? So that's one of my concern. Now you guys speak very highly of the peace program. Yes, some of the guys, you know, you all, um, put them in work program, putting some money in their pockets to get them not away from criminal activities. But what about the victims? What about the persons who have lost family members? They have to incur costs. What about those persons? You know what I'm saying? What about those? How come you guys are not reaching to those persons? I am from this constituency, give me the time to speak. I am from this constituency, give me the time to speak.
Scott, continue your question, continue your question.
Thank you, thank you very much, my friend. And I must say, congratulations, the way you operate tonight, you know, yeah, you, you have that fire inside of you, my friend.
Thank you, Scott, but you, you're going over the minute.
All right, one more question, okay? Thank you. Thank you, just bear with me for a second.
Okay, we are pressed for time, Scott.
Now.
Scott, ten seconds, ten seconds.
Ten seconds. Okay, Mister Grant, well, most of the other things I want to speak about, Mister Grant, I think we could handle, let me know, Taxi Forum. But my friends, I must say, the consti, the town hall meeting is for the constituents of the constituency. And it is quite unfair.
Okay, Scott, Scott.
It is quite unfair that you guys come here and this to a person from making, from venting, from hearing their views, it's quite disrespectful.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you very much.
We have one more person, the young man right there, just one, we, we are pressed for time.
Good night to everyone. My name is Alan Watley, representing constituency Number Four. Now firstly, um, Team Unity Government, congratulations on booming, um, tourism firstly. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate y'all on building the second pier. Also for reconstructing the roads and good try, I mean, good luck on reconstructing over there. Now, on to some business. Now for thirteen years, I've been living up Stoneford Extension Project and there's no road, okay? We have to walk on dirt roads and we're not rushing anyone, but we the people would like to know if it's in your plans, okay? Now, secondly, I've been, I've graduated from Virtuous High School for five years with, well, from five years now, with nine subjects passed, okay? And also graduated CFBC with Associate Degree and there's no job there for me, okay? Um, we are, uh, me and Lindsay Grant already talked about that. And shout out to Mister Grant for helping me and my friends apply for lands and we really hope that it come to successfully, okay? Now, uh, once again, congratulate everyone up there on the podium and just stay strong and fight down all the critics, you know?
Okay, thank you. We allow the three persons who are standing to give their questions, but one question each, one question each and under a minute.
Okay. I present good night to me brethren Lindsay Grant. Minister for Tourism, Minister for Countryside Number Four. I come here to give my support to Mister Honorable Lindsay Grant. From the past twenty years, I've been under some bandage. Look at what just tonight. Look at my just code, just because of Lindsay Grant. And Lindsay Grant, you have to give me some more support because I've given him all my support. Short and brief, done.
Thank you.
Everybody, good night. Question, Mister Grant. Over five years, you say you're gonna give us land. You said you don't push off the lands them. Three years ago, you come tonight and you say you're gonna start. We want concrete evidence. Date, when you're gonna really, really start building the houses them for us in Challengers? Hello, hello, I let me try now, darling, you don't hear you so, let me try now. Darling, Mister Grant, we for Challengers. Challengers, over five years, we behind you for houses. Five years, you said three. At least you could have come with some concrete evidence and say when? Because you say we behind you for five years, which in is five years. Sean Richards this year for you too. I love basketball, I love sports. Years upon years of basketball, City Scabber, you was there the opening. About ten, we got an in court. Too much of we ain't a following, we ain't find me money, gone on the gym. Middle work shift next to me, can't go watch a good game. So we want something done with basketball scabber. Mister Grant, we need some full, full concrete evidence and I know you're gonna give, you're gonna give it to us before I leave, right? Nice, thank you.
Thank you. So we have the last person.
Thank you, Mister Master of Ceremonies, Azad Gums, my godchild. Prime Minister, members of the table. Team Unity, massive. Make some noise. Make some noise.
Yeah.
My grandmother used to say, when peace like a river attended my way. When souls like Sibyl's rose, whatever, my gods, they've taught me to say. It is well, it is well with Team Unity. It is well with Team Unity. And nobody, nobody can come here to mash up or make the confusion with Team Unity. When you have your personal issues, take it down the road. Not a town hall meeting. Town hall is for politics and it's for the country. It's not for your personal business. So who want to attack Grant? They could meet Grant anywhere because Grant back broad. And Grant could handle them. Now, I want to say, you know, Mister Grant have been getting a lot of knockback, you know? For years in this constituency, you know, they taking ready man seat all the time, you know? Now the man grew, rose to victory. People can't appreciate what Mister Grant have been doing. Mister Grant, tonight I want to say thank you. Thank you. And it's Lindsay Grant again in Number Four. I will be there for you. Campaigning for you. I will be there, Lindsay. I done do me own little campaigning on the phone, you know, with all the people and so on. I there for you, Lindsay. You see? My grandmother used to say, you know, when you sorry for old dog, you turn wrong and I root down your gate. But nobody can root down this gate in Team Unity. It's the tonight how I stand up and I make my voice be heard. Because we having a Team Unity, we having a town hall meeting. Nobody come here with a passer, passer and all kind of thing. People come here, right, and on the phone, people are sending message, question to ask. Come to the microphone and talk out your head. Do like me, come to the microphone and talk. Talk, bang your mouth. Now tonight, I want to, to say something, a statement, a question to, to the Honorable, my Sandy Pointer, fellow Sandy Pointer, Wendy Phipps. Now, over the past years, right? I have a passion for elderly persons, senior citizens, oh, I just listen to me carefully. You know, we have this, the month, senior citizen month, and we have all kind of stuff for them and so on. But I think that we need to go further, Senator Honorable, Honorable Wendy Grant. We need to go further. And Wendy Grant, Wendy, Wendy Phipps, sorry, my bad, Wendy Phipps. A little slip of the tongue is the fault of the brain, all right? Great is intact, ask Lindsay. All right. Now, what I'm saying, Minister Phipps, over the past years, right? I have a passion for elderly persons, right? And I think, this is my idea, that at the end of the year, the government should look for the oldest person in the Federation and to honor them and honor them in style and get everybody to be a part of the big grand celebration. Because they have worked, they have worked tirelessly, they have contributed to the country, so nothing is wrong. At the end of the year, and this person, who is person is, is the oldest surviving person in the country. Might be honor them and make them feel good. And that is a way of giving back to the country. In closing, because Azad stand up, so I gotta go. I want to say that I love Team Unity and you love Team Unity too. So, so don't take on Douglas with the dummy bell. He up and down with a dummy bell, reading a dummy bell. Nobody want a dummy bell, you want to hear the real bell from the Prime Minister. So when the Prime Minister ring the bell, they say he ring the bell in same pause here, the dummy bell, right? He paint it red. After copper ring, all the red paint drop off it and the bell is white. The bell is white. So I want to say, do not be bothered and confused about this lot of labor propaganda that is going around. Let us stand firm and let us support our Team Unity Government and let us support our candidates. And remember they can't do it alone. So we want everybody, everybody to be a part and to support the government for that term. Thank you.
Thank you, Godfather, you said a mouthful. I would like to announce that the next town hall meeting will be in constituency Number Six and the venue for that town hall meeting will be announced as time goes on. At this constituency Number Six. At this point in time, I would like to invite our very own Mendisia Masham to give the vote of thanks. Sorry, before Mendisia does the vote of thanks, we allow the ministers to answer the questions that were addressed to them very briefly.
I would like first of all to address the matter that Veronica Burney raised. I hope I don't take too long on it. But Veronica's matter has been a matter that has been ongoing for some time. In fact, on the tenth of January, twenty twenty, the Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Tourism, Mrs. Morton, called and followed up with a message inviting Veronica to come to a meeting on the thirteenth of January, twenty twenty. Miss Burney did not attend. On the thirteenth of February, twenty twenty, Mrs. Morton again called, Mrs. Burney inviting her to a meeting. On the twenty third of February, twenty twenty, Miss Burney did not attend again. On the twenty sixth of February, twenty twenty, Miss Burney arrived at the Office of the Ministry of Tourism and was invited to a meeting the following day on the twenty seventh. On the twenty seventh of February, Miss Burney was given the approval. On the twenty seventh of February, Miss Burney was given letter of approval. In fact, the letter of approval was dated the seventh of January, twenty nineteen because it is since then we had had that letter for her. The letter of the seventh of January, twenty nineteen reads, "The Ministry of Tourism has reviewed your request for tour operator license. Please note that the ministry has no objection to your request and therefore grants approval for the upgrade of your license." That was on the seventh of January, twenty nineteen. It goes on to say, "Please be advised that any individual employed by your company must be approved by the Ministry of Tourism, undertake training facilitated by the Senkets Tourism Authority and behold of a valid ID issued by the Senkets Tourism Authority." In fact, Miss Burney was given a document for requirements for an additional number which outlined a number of documents that she needed to satisfy the requirements of the license. And we are still waiting on Miss Burney. So that's answered that one. In terms of Sylvia Paris, in terms of Sylvia Paris, I didn't want to specifically say when we would have started the housing, but if I can. But if I can say tonight, if I can say tonight, I had discussions over the last several days with the Minister of, the Minister responsible for NHC and the General Manager of NHC. And my understanding, and Eugene Hamilton, you can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding, we are trying to begin the process for the latest next week in in terms of clearing the land, et cetera. So I hope that satisfied Miss um Miss Paris's um concern. And I must say, I want to apologize, I want to apologize to the people of Challengers for the length of time it would have taken. But as you would appreciate in my delivery, I said we had challenges in Challengers. Challenge is a difficult place to build at the moment. We have tried and tried and tried and no ends of trying. But hopefully, we have um, we have now been able to to come to a resolution of the matter. And so shortly, we will begin those houses. I heard Queen, Queen tonight about the difficulty and the challenges with respect to the safari and the distribution of jobs. I totally agree with her. It's a work in progress. It's a very fluid situation on the port and from time to time, we change the strategy and so it's ongoing. We 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 know there's an issue with terms of um the dispatching and very shortly, we are going to hopefully change up the system again. But since I've been here in this position, we have changed the dispatching position no less than three times. But every time we tried, um, there are always persons who try to beat the system and that's the problem we have, people trying to beat the system. If persons try to stay focused and do what they have to do, it will be an easier um process. I think those are all the questions for me. And the 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 question, excuse me, that Scott won't oppose was basically what Queen was saying in terms of dispatching. We appreciate that there's a problem and we will try to to sort that out. So in due course, that will be sorted out. But I must say that the position at the at Port Zante, we're in a much better position than we were five years ago. Thank you.
Any other responses from the ministers? Oh yes, economic development in number four.
The economic development in our, in our world, well, in constituency four. In fact, we have a project to do in Challengers. We should have done it during the currency of the last budget, but unfortunately, we didn't get around to it because we had some challenges with persons on lands in the Challengers area, which we are still trying to contend with. It's really a historical site in the area of Bloody Point, which we were going to commission a the Amerindian Village, bringing back the historic and the culture of that time period. We did have a budgeted item for it, so the money was set aside for the development of that area. But we're still having a challenge with it. But I'm hoping over the next couple of months that will be sorted out. But we did in fact have something designated for that. In terms of economic development, I will answer Scott also in in these terms. Part of what we have been trying to tell persons like Scott and the other persons who have the safaris, et cetera, is that the money must seem to flow through Bastea and through the rural areas. And part of the problem that we have is that many taxi drivers and safari owners are carrying coolers on their trucks and safaris. And so rather buying drinks to give the tourists from the mom and pop shops all along the island main road, they are sometimes giving the tourists the drinks gratis for free. And that really truly hurts the shop owners all across the country. Like the Tupacs in Old Road, you know, they get hurt. Like Sandra with her shop up in Challengers, she gets hurt. Because when they do that, the tourists don't have any impetus to 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 buy from the shop. So I hope Scott will understand that the practice that pertains now of persons carrying these coolers on their safaris and on their taxi is a measure that we should cut out and stop because it's not helpful for the economic development of the mom and pop shops in the rural areas.
Thank you, Minister Grant, you could. Go ahead.
No, Mister Lindsay Grant. I know that you come here to serve the people, right? But I want to do it in a respectful way. Look after Glenn Roy Henderson, I've been suffer for twenty years. Timothy Harris was in the same party. So just because Timothy turn over the crosswalk, I turn over crosswalk to Timothy. So please help out Glenn Roy Henderson. I got three kids, one only two years. Please help me with tax and license in the bus.
Okay, thank you. We now invite Miss Marsham to give the vote of thanks for this evening. Oh, we have, sorry, we have Senator, the Honorable Wendy Phipps.
Yes, thank you, Mister Gomes. Um, this is in response to the question posed by Hardis Gomes, well, it was a suggestion rather, having to do with the expansion in the programming for outreach to the elderly. The Department of Social Services does a lot of work with the um the elderly in St. Kitts and Nevis. And by the way, we refer to them as our seniors to be politically correct. But however, the um suggestion he raised about having an event at the end of the year for the oldest person, we will take that on board. But at the same time, I wanted him to be aware and for others to be aware that this government in twenty sixteen, by virtue of proclamation authorized by the Governor General, had already declared that the thirty first of May in each year is Centenarians' Day. And that is the date at which we honor all of the centenarians in the country. And at the same time, the Governor General opens up Government House and provides for them as his honored guests for that day. But for the centenarians and their families. But nevertheless, the idea of dealing with the oldest persons in the country at the end of the year, we will look into that.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Any more responses from ministers? Okay. We now invite Miss Marsham for the third time to to give the vote of thanks.
Family, family, family. Good night. Honorable Head Table, Honorable Senator Wendy Phipps, Honorable Senator Vincent Jussie Byron, Honorable Deputy Prime Minister Shaun K. Richards, Honorable Senator Akila Nisbet, Akila Byron Nisbet, Honorable Ambassador Janelle Powerwell, Honorable Ambassador Eugene Hamilton, Honorable Senior Minister Vance Amory, Honorable Prime Minister of St. Kitts and Nevis, Dr. the Honorable Timothy Sylvester Harris, Honorable Representative for constituency number four, Lindsay Fitzpatrick Grant. We thank you. It is with honor I give this vote of thanks to the great people of constituency number four. We thank you for sending our man of business to government. We have a tourism industry that just exceeds expectations. Never ever, ever before in my life have I seen four cruise ships docked at the same time at our wonderful Piers Ambassador. We thank you, thank you, thank you to our honorable rep, the honorable Lindsay. To our honorable Prime Minister, Dr. the Honorable Timothy Harris, we thank you for leading our wonderful Federation to these many historical contributions and deliverance from the ten men in one. We thank you, we thank you, we thank you. We thank you for safer streets. We thank you for the poverty alleviation program and we thank you for more opportunities. To the entire honorable cabinet, we thank you for dedicating your lives to the cause of this, our wonderful Federation. St. Kitts feels so much lighter. To our wonderful citizens of this Federation, especially in number four, we thank you for putting trust in a trusting government. To all organizers of tonight's town hall meeting, we thank you for your hard work in all preparations. Chelsea Williams, you're our warrior in number four, we thank you. To all constituents that took the mic this evening, we thank you for your concerns and we hear you. To our wonderful representative in number four, we thank you for the breakfast program. We thank you for our Mother's Day luncheon. We thank you for our new homes. We thank you for such powerful representation in the House of Parliament. Thank you for five more years taking care of us. We thank you, thank you, thank you. Good night, God bless.
We thank you, Miss Marsham, for the vote of thanks. And we will now conclude this evening's proceeding. But before we do that, let's give a round of applause for our Team Unity Government.
We are continuing the series of walkthroughs through the various constituencies. And this evening, we were in the Stoneford area of Challengers, where we met the residents and the constituents and engaged them in terms of what the Team Unity Government has been doing. We've indicated to them that over the last five years, we have demonstrated to the citizens of St. Kitts and Nevis the type of government that this government is and that we have performed and that we will stand on our performance. And we've asked them for their support in the next five years as we move St. Kitts and Nevis further in the right direction. We have a lot more work to do. So we are banking on the people of St. Kitts and Nevis to give us that opportunity again to perform more than we did in these first five years. Because you will see, as we approach further into this.